Good evening, I'd like to call the meeting order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its hands.
Okay, I guess we'll go to the Town Administrator's Weekly Update.
Good evening. All right, first thing is kind of a follow-up. I did speak to Mr. Long today. Him and I kind of went through via the telephone, went through some town meeting books. I'm trying to get to the bottom of this planning board appointment to make sure that the board is appointing accordingly. Article 24 of the 1963 Town Meeting does reference that the Board of Selectmen will appoint planning board members pursuant to a statute. It doesn't reference in there how many years the members are appointed for. Thank you. The very next year, they make appointments in there and they make a one-year, a two-year, a four-year, and then three, five-year appointments. The idea in the conversation that Dennis and I had was that he believes that they did those one, two, and four to get everybody on staggered. And then you can see where they did five years, but I can't find anything in an actual warrant article. And he agreed that it was, we were assuming that it was five years based on kind of what we saw in town meetings. But I can't find anything that indicates that you have to. We had a conversation as to when it might have possibly been changed or how it got changed or why. I mean, I think the Selectmen have the authority to do that if it's not spelled out in a warrant article. But we did, that's what I was able to find. So, does that sound accurate, Dennis?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was more because that's the longest amount that they did, some of them, for. So, but we're talking about 63. I mean, we'd have to track to see when that changed, why. But I can't find an ordinance that requires it.
So if there's no ordinance, that means we can pretty much decide what we want to do.
I mean, unless, you know, unless we keep digging through town meeting. But that's, we found the 63 that he was referencing and that's what we were looking for.
How many years have we been doing, three-year? At least 10.
Oh, more than that, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, next is just FYI, we always let you know when staff takes classes. Uh, there's actually a new clerks class on Zoom that I decided to take after 16 years. Took it again. There's a good class. One of the laws that changed that I thought I would share with you that was interesting is some of our neighboring towns, the council, they're not required to do appointments of committees if they have no authority. If they're just gathering information, capital improvement committee, for example, they don't do oaths and don't actually assign them and appoint them and have them get sworn in because they're just volunteers gathering information. So that was kind of neat or interesting. But other than that, you'd be happy to know it was a good review. Speaking of training, I got a certification on my desk that Mr. Doliver took a Maine DOT work zone class. So that certificate's been put in his file. Thank you for that. Anytime anybody takes them, we try to get copies in their files. Who's my fire department liaison?
I think I am.
You don't have a memo yet because we're missing one. Kim, okay. So, um, the timeframe has come and gone for the full-time firefighter slash EMT. I spoke to the fire chief. We're going to set up interviews with the liaison and him. So I'll speak to her directly with that. Rec Committee, that's Ed, Kim.
That would be me.
Awesome. So, the rec field on 109 is being vandalized. Um, it has now happened probably four weeks in a row. Um, it started out with the flag. We took the flag down and, um, we're assuming that was the, you know, when it first started, we thought maybe it's a possibility that it, you know, blew away, it got unclipped. So the flag was missing. The next week, they tore the sanitizer out of inside the porta potty. And it was one of those days that we had a lot of rain and they spun their tires all the way around it to cover the porta potty with mud and dirt. And then a few more days going by and they replaced the porta potty. They, um, they did it again. They had, this time they took the toilet paper holder out and they damaged the lock on the front. Uh, last week, they, um, dumped boxes of trash there. Um, we were able to get a pair, a set of license plates outside of the box of trash because, you know, when you dump trash, you leave your license plates in there. And, um, we got some mail that was in there. So the sheriff's and Deputy City has been privy to all this all along. I'm just kind of updating you publicly, although I think I've shared that with you guys. Talking to the chair about, um, some cameras and some signs and some other things. And, you know, one of the conversations that keeps coming up is why don't you just lock the gate? Um, you know, individuals could still walk around and go damage the porta potty. You wouldn't be able to drive in there, but...
Not likely to happen, though.
Yeah. What do you mean if it's locked?
Yeah.
So you want them to lock it?
Well, I think that's going to be the only cure. Lock it, either use a combination lock so you can easily give those that are going to be in there on a regular basis a combination.
And then if they take the time to walk around and vandalize it, then...
Yeah, I think what they're doing is pulling in there and...
Right.
You know, they're not going to, they're not going to pack on the street and walk in.
Yeah, they're less likely to park on the street because someone will see the vehicle there.
Right, right.
All right, well, um, we'll ask the rec to start locking it.
Yeah.
And...
But if they lock it, if they do a combination, make sure that we have the combination.
Yes, of course.
All right. Um, some of the things that we're doing tonight are appointing a lot of different members. One of them, one of the committees is the Zoning Board of Appeals. I wanted to let you know that Chairman Dan Archibald has indicated that due to his work conflict in a campground that he is going to respectfully decline a renomination to that committee. And also Ryan Gleason because of his work. I don't think he was able to make it to the last couple of meetings anyways. It's just too busy of a schedule. I point that committee out because we received a ZBA application. Um, and we did confirm that it was within 30 days based on the ordinance. They paid the fee. Um, so we're working that out. I'm pretty sure I have a solid four appointments in there. And also, they have a ZBA meeting already scheduled for Mondays at 12th, Cheryl, 12th or 14th, whatever that Monday is, for the Gilead that's been, um, tabled and tabled and tabled. So not sure if that's going to happen yet, but I'm going to keep an eye on that committee. Your alarm company sent you a notice this week to let you know that monthly fees are going up by $13.25. And times are tough and that's how they're taking care of their fees. The E9, let's see, I got an email from William Tower, you should all know, from Sanford Dispatch. Says greetings, Jennifer from Dispatch. I'm in, need us some information. See the email below. Um, the county EMA has some money we're attempting to utilize for infrastructures. I need your help with an estimate for any needed repairs to the Blueberry Hill Radio Tower slash shed. So, how and where am I going to get that?
Should be moving that one up to the chief, right?
I would say, yeah.
Just let him come up with a number?
By the chief, yeah. Yeah. $400 a month would be good.
Yeah, I'll try that. No other infrastructure concerns that you have other than what, let Rick look at it?
Yeah, have Rick look at it. There was some talk back along, actually back when we put that together, that at the end of that, it may, probably should be replaced.
Oh, the whole tower?
Yeah, and possibly moved. Yeah.
Move to Go Hill?
I'm not so sure that people would like it at Go Hill. That's the only problem. It makes perfectly good sense.
Wouldn't it save the taxpayers' money as well? Because don't we pay the...
We already own, yeah, we pay $400 a month to have it, you know, for the lease on the land.
Yep.
Yeah.
And our contract is coming due.
Got to be within another year or so.
I was saying the 23, but somewhere around there.
I think it's, yeah, I'm not sure.
I think we did a four-year, right?
No, it was like a 10-year.
It was a 10-year.
It was a 10-year, yeah, it was a long contract. Okay.
It's been a while.
All right, I'll talk to Rick and, um, we'll sort it out.
They'll talk to me about it only because I helped set it up in the beginning.
Mm-hmm.
So, not that I want to horten in on the liaison thing.
All right, let me see what he thinks the condition of it is. Uh, next is just an update from your new CEO. I wanted to let you know that he did get 911 certified through the state of Maine. So he's got his login and password to be able to do the house numbers, which was one of the first steps. He also passed the Legal Issues and Enforcement Techniques certification. That was the first one that, um, the state recommended he take. And then just about an hour ago, he informed us that he passed his internal plumbing exam. So, uh, he's got three under his belt and he's continued to work on it. Things are going well downstairs, very smooth, um, so...
Yeah, I spoke to him and the secretary.
Ashley.
Ashley, but, and, uh, he seemed to be doing well.
Yep. Uh, next is just an FYI. DEP has requested they use the building on September 9th for some erosion training. So we'll see that email passed around when, um, they start taking sign-ups. The state of Maine has posted uncollected property money that they have. Um, so we always encourage everybody to take a look at that. I never know when your name will show on it, show up on it. So money the state is trying to give back. Um, Town Report. So this was the first year that we really cut down on the amount of town reports that we were printing because every year we end up with boxes and boxes. Um, we're down to about 40 of them. Wondering if the board thinks that we should consider ordering another 100 or, I mean, our fiscal year is ending. So on a good day, we'd be starting a, the next town report. So you want to just...
I'd write it out. How soon, how quick can you get them?
Oh, UPS, probably, matter of days.
Yeah. I think I'd wait till you got down to like five or 10.
Maybe by then we'll be at print for the next one.
Yeah.
Be a good time to talk about the memo I'll send out tomorrow trying to get fiscal year closeouts and town report letters so we can get going on it. You guys can start thinking about your dedication and who that might go to. Okay. Um, just kind of an FYI because I've seen a couple things online and I did get one call. Um, town meeting minutes are not up yet. Um, and they are not up for a couple of reasons. So town meeting was Saturday, June 19th. Couple of hiccups that we've run into in regards to the meeting is, and I did speak to the moderator about this. Um, number one is that, um, as clerk, I'm required to take the minutes of all the motions and everything that takes place. As you know, Michelle and I were counting during all of those articles. So until the tape comes up and I can listen to what was going on while we were doing a formal count, it's hard for me to know who made the motion, who seconded it. We also have an individual who seconded many motions, believe it or not. And between myself, Cheryl, David, we've all passed this picture around. Haven't quite figured out his last name. And the incoming voting list is still sealed. So until I can see who was checked in, um, we will, um, get his last name and get those minutes done. Um, also because of the annual town meeting minutes, we always send them to the full board treasurer. Um, very serious the money that was approved. So if anybody needs to know anything right away, instead of posting it online, certainly give me a call and I'll go over any articles, give you some results. But otherwise, they will be up just as soon as I'm done with them. Uh, last article is regarding the CEO complaint form. So the prior code enforcement officer, um, required if somebody wanted to make a complaint about someone's property, that they put it in writing. You don't put it in writing, you put your name on it, I'm not going over to look at it. That was the method, the theory that kind of seemed to work. Um, so we are with a new code officer now and the question is, is that the direction that the Board of Selectmen want him to continue to take? Um, he's got a few verbally that, um, people want him to go look at, but they don't want to put their name on anything. They don't want to write anything out. It's, so we're looking for your opinion.
I like the idea of the form. It just makes, it gives you a record of it. It's not hearsay. It's something that someone's concerned about enough to put their name on. It's easy to say, I don't think Joe Blow has a permit to do this. Can you go look at it? He could, he'll be, he could be all day long chasing those.
Well, and that's the thing, and that's what you're finding. If you don't have to put your name on it, then it is, you're right. And we are spending taxpayer money on his salary, so...
I find that any complaint that comes in the town hall, there should be some sort of record that way there. You don't have somebody, you know, calling up anonymously and just making a complaint saying, just to harass the next neighbor. And if you get a complaint, you got a name, you can see a trend and...
Okay, so we make, may make a few amendments to the complaint just to make it more personalized for how he feels. But we will make sure that that form is required as it was. Uh, last thing I just wanted to talk about very quickly was a couple of warrant articles and just get some direction from the board. Um, so we know that the article's passed. So, um, the Article 27, which was to see if the town will vote to appropriate from undesignated fund $50,000 for the exterior repairs of the Acton Town Hall, included but not limited to siding on the back of the building. There, so this article passed at town meeting. Ed, the only conversation, as I recall, other than the amounts and the bids and so forth, um, a couple of people made mention that when we talked about the window bid, that it made sense to do the windows and the heating system before you put siding on. Um, I'm just wondering if the board has any instruction that they want to start doing something with this fund or sit tight for the summer?
What, what the individual, one of the individuals made the point was that by putting in the heating system would be like putting a cart full of horse until we did the windows and everything else.
Yeah, it makes perfectly good sense. I mean, we got to, we got to the windows.
Yeah, we had, I mean, we had the bid from...
You can do it all in conjunction, but still...
The Portland, Portland Glass Windows was 30-ish?
I remember.
It was like 30, 30,000, 32,000, I think.
Going to make sure we leave enough money to do the heating system.
Well, the heating system's on a different article.
Oh, okay.
It's a different article.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you could do that and then see if you have, you know, used any leftover money for siding. You know, I don't know if you could do siding in the fall. Can you side for, how much siding can you get done for 18, 20,000? I feel like you...
You won't get the whole thing done probably, but, you know, it depends. I mean...
So as far as the windows, I mean, we got the price from Portland Glass. I mean, I can see if we can find a couple other window places to possibly come out and take the same measurements.
Yep.
Okay.
It's also, what about renewal by Anderson? I don't know. Only because I know the name, I've seen it, that's all.
Yeah.
Um, there's contractors that...
Well, I think if you contact like a Harvey representative and Anderson representative, they might put you in line with one of their...
Actually, I think, talk to the CEO. He worked for Eld, didn't he work for Eldridge?
No.
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 Okay.
But if you talk to Eldridge Lumber or...
Eldridge Lumber would be one, uh, I don't know.
Even like Lowe's and Home Depot, don't I see signs that they install?
I'd stick with the regular lumber ads.
And what they'll do is they'll put you, put us in the direction of a contractor. Or they might even do it for us with that contractor.
Yeah, check with Middleton, check with Eldridge.
All right, so we're in agreement that windows will be the first so we'll get some prices to bring back to you.
We kind of have to do the windows first before you decide.
Yeah, yeah.
Making sure it's clear.
Yeah, because you never know what you're going to run into with the windows and...
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so the next, okay, so the next article was the, uh, 25,000 for the HVAC. Um, and the only, well, not only, it's a part of the conversation. There was a conversation about maybe lowering the amount, but once they realized that the electrical wasn't in there and that we already had some building maintenance issues, the 25,000 did pass. Now, we've gotten, we've got the quotes from our heating guy, the only person that we've used. What are you, are you waiving the bid process on that and having him install them where he's going to have to service them?
My, my theory on this is this. This is the guy, this is the individual we've used for many years.
In all of our town buildings.
And when there's a breakdown on the heating system, if we go and get bids and we get somebody from Portland or something like that, and then we have, we're already having this problem with our generator. We just got nailed with a huge bill on that when they had to come out to diagnose it. And because they travel so far, they charge us travel time, everything else. But my theory is, is we've been using him along this whole time. When there's an issue, he's the first guy to boot here and I would hate to ruin that relationship.
I agree.
All right, so we will contact him and, um, hopefully get those, um, installed. I'm going to skip the town hall parking lot because William is going to share some thoughts with that when he comes up under his department. Uh, the only other thing was the generator for the, um, fire station. Kind of the same thing. We have the electrician. He did get two bids secondly, so he's got two to compare. And, um, the lower one was the electrician that we used. Um, was it Craig, Corey Norman?
Craig, wasn't it?
Right.
Yeah.
Craig Norman?
Yeah. But I'll bring that back in front of you just so you can see it. But that was many weeks, many months out, if I recall.
Twenty-two months, something like that.
All right, that's all for me.
Not 22 months, it's almost a year. It's almost, it's over. It's a year, I thought.
Really?
It was a long time, it was...
Yeah, it was, um, I'm going to say...
Is the other place any quicker?
No, this time of year, they, for whatever reason.
Yeah.
Even being a municipality, they tried bumping him up and couldn't. Remember we talked about right before town meeting, he was looking at a lot of his different accounts to see if he could come up with money quicker. That was still going to be into September.
Yeah.
Um, so, we'll see if we can do anything.
Now, you were the liaison last, you were the last liaison, correct?
To the fire department? Yes.
Do you know if he's, um, tried having the one we have back up and running for the next power surge?
I don't know if he has or not.
Okay.
I think it works off of it.
I know, it's been worked on and worked on and worked on.
Yeah, I know.
I think it's finally...
The last power surge, I know we were out and I didn't know if they'd had someone come back up or they just gave up on it or not, so...
And I don't know what's wrong with it. I don't know whether it's engine or generator, so...
See if I can help put some pressure on the company and move him up.
Yeah.
Okay, all set?
Yes, sir.
Okay, warrant bills?
I signed.
Yeah, I signed them up.
We didn't have a school on this one.
No.
Okay.
No.
We just have the one that I've asked for clarification just so it doesn't appear that we sign them all. But I've got one that we're getting clarification on. And I'll let you know what that is.
Uh, approval of the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it. All four? Okay. Um, minutes of the last meeting?
Make a motion to approve the minutes in the last meeting.
I'll second it.
Yeah?
All in favor, yeah. Uh, Department Head Committee, Chair Updates. Road Commission, District 1, Acton Ridge Road Project.
Now, we're in District 1. Um, the road commissioner on him has got a scope of work for you guys for a piece of road I'm going to reclaim on Acton Ridge. Uh, it's, uh, it's somewhere, so, uh, we're a scope of work together. I got a mile of road I want to reclaim up there. I got to replace three culverts, a 30-inch culvert, 12-inch culvert, and a 15-inch culvert up there. And I got two driveway culverts I got to replace and ditch in so I put a scope of work together so you guys can see it.
So, you say a mile? A mile of Acton Ridge, is that what you're doing?
Yeah, a mile of Acton Ridge is...
Starting at the dam or where you're starting?
We're going to go from the Mann Road intersection right there. Almost that, probably maybe a quarter mile past Asbury Lane right before you sat down over that hill. Then, uh, then we're going to grind from Acton Ridge Road intersection down to the H Road. Because I don't know if you ever noticed it coming up the H Road in that intersection, the road goes like this. So hopefully we grind and we kind of flatten the road out there and get the water to go down past that guy's house on the right there. Because I can't put a ditch in there because it's cemetery, because of the stone wall, I can't get no depth for a culvert. So I've been working with the gentleman in that house and hopefully we're going to try to, when they're coming and grind, hopefully if we got enough material, we're going to try to flatten that road out and push that water way past that guy's house and dump it off in the woods. Because we get such a problem, like right now, we got a lot of rain up there tonight and it's starting to wash underneath the stone wall. And I don't really want to be rebuilding stone walls, so...
So this is just the culverts and...
We got the ditch line we're going to do. And then, uh, I got one section, I think we're going to put some curb in on one section. So I'll have to, uh, I got to pull a few driveway culverts out. And, uh, the gentleman we're working with, Beth, with HVAC Carol, we met with him yesterday, he's going to come out when we start the project. We're going to look at what he thinks about curbing the right-hand side of Acton Ridge going up through because I just get so much water down through there.
Whereabouts on Acton Ridge you want to do?
You're trying to like go up my house near that ditch line on the right-hand side. You know, just the, every year we get a lot of rain that washes the ditch out and crossing the culverts out, so...
Like a Cape Cod curb or something like that?
Yeah, something like that. Because when you come down, when you sat down, headed back down to it, down towards the, because there's a 15-inch culvert we're going to drop water in there. Then we're going to pick the curb up again and drop the rest of it in that 30-inch culvert. So he's going to come out when we get ready to start the project on the 13th. And, uh, we're just going to, we're going to walk the road and see what he thinks and get an idea of how much we might have to fill in. And, uh, I think we're going to leave it down a little bit so when they're grading, they're going to grade up to it and put their final grade when they get ready to pay, so...
Okay, we're going to make a motion?
Yeah, we'll make a motion that we approve the scope of work as presented. Total, total dollar amount's $24,751.22.
For the Acton Ridge Road?
Yeah, Acton Ridge.
I'll second that. All four? All four? All in favor? Okay.
So, if I can just, so in the past, you've adopted the scope of work, you know, to be as, to be as close as possible to that number. I mean, it's possible, you know, I'm just hesitant with the motion to have that exact amount in there, because if we go over a little under, he's gonna be tied, so.
That is a four, right?
Yeah, a four.
Yeah. But, I mean, I mean, even give or take 10%, I mean, it's, anything can happen, right?
Yeah, I mean, we just...
I mean, this is an estimate, I just don't want him to be tied to that exact amount.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I'll amend it to...
But the only problem is with even making an amendment, when we're voting on something like such as this, and the...
It's still in his budget, uh...
It's still in his budget, so, you know, we make a motion to approve this...
Yeah.
Roundabout, I mean, why are we even making a motion?
Yeah, we're really not...
In the past, yeah, in the past, you haven't made motions, you've just signed off on it.
Okay, so you won't then?
Scratch...
The motion.
I'm gonna scratch my motion and just, you know...
So, yeah, if you just initial the scope of work, what we do is attach it to the pay that week, so that if we ever get audited, we can show from the road ordinance that we've done the paper trail.
I think also last year, like, we had, like, after coming through the pavement, we got to do shoulders, I just did another scope of work.
Yep, yep.
Also, that week that we shut, because we gotta shut the road down for two days, I got no choice, that 30-inch culvert, I'm gonna have to shut the road down, and I have a sign up there, and people have been calling me, and I've been, well, I've been sorting stuff up, and also my tree guy's gonna be there when we have the road shut downs, we have to do a flag and all that.
So you notified all the, you know, the surrounding area, your own fire departments and all that?
Yeah, I talked to the new field fire chief, I gotta call Rick again and give him my plan, but we're gonna detour it, and if something really bad happened, we'll fill that culvert back in and get him over it, but, no, I'm gonna talk to Rick and give him my, my final plan of where the detours are gonna be, and I talked to the new field fire chief, and I've talked to everybody on that, the road that we're gonna do the main part of the project on, so.
You've got a date up there on your sign?
We've got a 13, Tuesday the 13th, that we're gonna replace the 30-inch culvert, which will go from the end of the H Road, take a left head towards my house, it's gonna be right there, so the road's gonna be shut down from the H Road intersection to the Mann Road intersection, and then the detour's gonna be up there by the farm, and we're gonna talk to the president out there, and I get detour signs, slow signs, and they have no problem with it. And then, on the second day, we're gonna have to shut down the H Road down to Asbury Lane, and they're gonna detour up through there, so Tuesdays and Wednesdays are kind of like quiet days up there, so I'm hoping that we can get as much as we can done in those two days.
I, my, I would suggest, this is just a suggestion, we had this issue back in the day when they shut down Youngs Ridge Road, a prior road commissioner, and they end up using a private road as a detour, and it ended up being kind of an issue at the end of it. Is there any way, we, maybe we should ask them to see if we can have something written from the president of the road association?
Yeah.
Just because what ended up happening was when we sent them down Eagle Road, remember that? And next thing you know, Eagle Road wanted us going to do repairs and this and that, and all this other stuff, so if we can get something written from the road association president, just say that we have permission to go across.
Okay, yeah, no, I, I talked to him, I talked to him the other day, and he said, you know, he's just gonna say, you know, all that and everything, he said, I'll, I'll call and talk.
Yeah, I think that was just a good way to cover, cover our tail on that, so, yeah, I have no problem.
While we're up here, I know at town meeting, we talked about the parking lot. I was thinking the other day, I don't, I really don't want to pave nothing this year, so I'm thinking that if you guys are for it, I think we should, you know, if everybody's in favor, I think we should tear the old fire station down this year. I know kind of, I don't know how people really felt about that at town meeting, but I think we should tear the old fire station down this year, and then get a, get a number to fill in the driveway, because that's out, from what I've been seeing, that's the only thing we're gonna be able to do, is fill the driveway in from where it goes down now and fill that in, and get a solid number for next year, and not spend all the money to be appropriated this year, roll that in for paving next year, and prepping the parking lot to get it ready for paving next year, so I didn't know what you guys felt about that.
Well, I, the only concern I have is, first, we have to present to the people why we're tearing it down, and what our project goal's gonna be. I think really before we go tearing anything down, we have some sort of plan, this is why we're doing it, this is what's gonna happen, you know, what the parking lot's gonna look like, that way there, we can, you know, have a sit-down and, you know, make a decision on it. You know, I, I, I'm for what you want to do, I just want to make sure everybody else is on board with it.
Well, I was thinking too, I said, it's probably gonna require a little bit of lengthy process, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
I know people don't want to see it coming down, but I'm sure people want to see a plan of what, you know, we're looking into the future here, we got more people here all the time, so we can get some more parking lot space.
Well, I, I just, I believe that by taking it down, we're able to fix the issues we have with the existing parking lot, and it might get rid of some other issues down the road that we have with...
We get a mold problem in the building.
Yeah.
So there is, yeah, but yeah, we can, we'll put together a...
But it'd be nice if we could come up with...
Put together a real plan and...
Put together a plan, kind of go all there, and get, you know, a bunch of us together and say, okay, you know, this is what we want to do, and this is the reason why we're gonna do it, so we can present to the town people later on.
I was just, are you, I mean, do you, are you looking for any input from the public or residents about the building, or are you, as far as taking it down or leaving it up?
I guess we'd have to look at, we should look at our insurance thing that they wrote up.
Well, the insurance definitely would be happy with you taking it down.
Well, the reason why, the reason why I wanted to come up with some sort of plan, so that when we do open it up to discussion, you know, it's gonna come up at a meeting, this is the reasoning why, and this is what's the long-term, what we're gonna benefit from it, so that's why I think we really ought to do a plan before we have any sort of public hearing or anything like that. We really ought to get our ducks in a row first, and the mold issues, the insurance stuff and all that, you know, we just gotta get it all together before we do, you know...
So what would be the first step in putting this plan together?
I think we ought to really get, you know, the road commissioners together, the three of us, maybe, I don't know, maybe...
I think that would work.
Yeah, probably, you know, maybe even the code officer or something like that, you know, and looking over the building and just try to figure out the best move is here, and whether or not this is a good idea or not.
And there's a bunch of moving parts to tearing the building down too, you know, it's not just as simple as, it's not like back in the day, as you know, you come in, knock it down, ask for a vehicle, pack it up and bury it, you can't do that anymore.
No, no.
So, it's a lot of, a lot of things to be removed out of it first, and...
Yeah, so I think we, we want to hit that stuff first, so probably what we'll end up wanting to do is set up a, like a little...
Workshop.
Little round table, yeah.
Up there.
I'll get something scheduled.
I got, I got one more thing, I don't know how you guys are gonna feel about it, but just over the past few years, you know, doing the job, and at town meeting, the fire chief brought up the people that have slipped and fell out in the top parking lot, all the people coming into town also. I was thinking, we got a new code guy, and if we're doing all this shifting around, how we feel about maybe putting Jennifer's office downstairs, when we get the new parking lot, everything...
What? Start over. I, go, start over. Oh, the old people only come to me, I love my old people. They have this nice walkway.
I don't think Jen's office is moving anymore.
I mean, I have the whole downstairs.
I think you just undid everything that you've done with Jennifer.
No, I was thinking, I wasn't, I wasn't expecting that.
Were you pulling up to this?
No. Yeah, it's lower level, it makes sense.
You know, we could have, like, you know, some handicap back down the front, I just throw it out there, you know?
It's like redecorating a house, I'm all open to suggestions and ideas, as long as I get to pick it out.
Yeah, well, we appreciate the thought.
The office is made purple, she's fine.
That's right. Real quick though, Will, can you try to either text me or email me a blurb segment on the website and the sign about the dates on Acton Ridge Road and all that, like we talked about?
Okay.
Okay, any other department heads? Oh, there we go.
Leslie Beland, Road Committee Chair, I just wanted to follow up on a conversation that was had at town meeting, and unfortunately, I had to leave it, because I didn't know the whole thing. And it's regarding RSMS, and for our citizens who don't know, RSMS stands for Road Service Management Systems, and what it does is a computerized, it's a computer program that spits out and what roads should, should be prioritized, takes out the politics, and the town has purchased the, the software twice. Road Committee has gone out and surveyed all of the roads twice, and we still aren't using it. And in listening to town meeting, because it is on YouTube already, it seemed like at the end of the day, Jennifer had said that she hadn't received any directive to...
So the, the last time it was brought up at a selectman's meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, and I'll certainly pull up the tapes as well.
I've got it right here.
You, you were gonna come in one day, you were gonna pop in, right, and we were gonna look at the program together?
I was gonna come in, you, you said that there was some missing roads were seen to be added, which, my bad, I didn't follow up on that.
Okay.
And that there was prior, and it's supposed to be done prior to a training in March, did the training happen?
No, they never came.
Okay.
And I believe that it was either Will or somebody spoke about it at town meeting, that they, during COVID, they stopped doing the training and they shut it down.
Okay, do you know how, do you know how to get that program to spit out the reports?
I can do some basic reports, but I have no training in either, and that's why, and that's all I could say at town meeting, is that I recall the last time we talked about it, so you were gonna come in, we were gonna sit down together and see if we could kind of troubleshoot some of it and go through the, the program.
Okay, all right, and, all right, so, when do you have time to do that? Because we, let's, let's set up a time right now.
Okay, sure, but, but you agree, that's how this conversation left, I mean, the last time this was at a meeting.
And I'm looking at the minute, yeah, I was supposed to come in, and as I said, I, you know, I, I dropped the ball on that, but I was going on, on the assumption that training was supposed to happen in March.
Yeah, so the, the state shut down with COVID, there actually, a lot of them are still working from home, but they're not doing the training, and I think that, like I said, Will also confirmed that they just stopped doing it, so, I cannot do anything, I've got vacation, so I could do something the week of the 12th. So mornings, afternoon, what's better for you?
Any, any day during the week except Tuesday.
Okay, so, Friday the 16th, 10 o'clock.
Town talk?
Yep. I would invite the road commissioners, if you're free that day, it'd be a good idea for you to come in and...
Oh, no, they, they definitely should be there.
Friday, Friday the 16th, at 10 o'clock. Yep.
So we'll, we'll get that done, and the road committee had recommended that the road commissioners do the inputting each week when they do the paperwork.
Yep.
They're both on board with that.
Yep.
So I just want to make sure that at, at this point, you know, we can, we can get this actually up and running.
Yeah, no, the town definitely paid, it was $250 for the software, we've had this conversation many times, everybody agrees it should do some entering, and I know we've had a similar conversation, the beginning of the fiscal year is the best time to do it, and then eventually go back, so where it's July 1, and the new year is starting, it's a good time to, to get them on board, but there are a couple of manuals, but the, the system, we don't have the most up-to-date one, we'll reach out to the state again to see what kind of training they offer, but it's not really user-friendly, have you...
When the Paul Brown was in doing Stone Ice, he had told me that he would be happy to come in and help train, because he was instrumental in setting up the, the program. I don't know if it's free anymore. It may not be, it may not be...
But it's minimal, I mean, the entire program was $250, so I'm sure if there's some training, we can find that, it's, you know, so, I'm ready whenever you are, we'll see, on the 16th.
So I have, I'll see if I can find Paul's number if we, if you need that, and I just want to make sure that the selectmen tell you that we can move forward, so that...
Yeah, they've, they've known, I mean, it's been a conversation, I think they, they all thought that's, that was the next step.
COVID basically shut everything down in March, and, yeah.
Well, lead on, Max. Yeah, now it's time to get back to it.
Yeah.
Now, you said that there was some missing information, do you have a list of those roads that need to be done?
There are, I can get it from the reports, there are definitely missing roads, but I'd have to, we'd have to go in and print them off, so we can do that on the 16th.
Okay, so if you, if you, if you're able to, I mean, I, well, if you're on vacation, you can...
I'm not, I have staff that's on vacation, so...
Get them to me earlier.
We'll work on it together on the 16th, so you can see the program, and you can see what we're up against in trying to get some of them. The roads aren't all alphabetical either, so it's, it's a challenge, I look forward to showing it to you in person.
Okay, all right, so I'll see you on the 16th then.
10 o'clock.
Leslie, do you have any other road committee meetings scheduled?
I'm gonna be setting that up this week, so I've gotta give a 10-day notice, and I'll be out, Jennifer, I'll send you an email.
Absolutely.
Because I'm, I'm looking to have it as soon as I can.
Yeah, July is booking up quick, got a lot of committees getting back on it, so, I may know as soon as you can, I'll let you know if it's available.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, Joyce Backstreet, for capital improvement. Bring you up today, we've really gotten a lot done in a short period of time. We have, Kim was able to get a list of the town hall, the internal, part of the town hall, things that might be needed over a 1, 3, 5-year thing. We have a, from the fire department, the transfer station, the rec department, and both road commissioners, we have those. So, the best thing we have is a young man who was wonderful at putting spreadsheets and reports together, so that's where we are now, we're working. The one thing that's starting to show is you will see some overlap, even things we talked about tonight, you know that there are things we're going to need. Say it's the parking lot or something like that, you know, that's gonna be, from what I understand, that's an ongoing, not gonna be done in a week or a month.
Is that something you guys have discussed during your capital improvement meetings?
Just that it's a big sum of money is, is gonna be, you know, we would be remiss if we didn't put it in our report, and like we said, our report is just that, a report. You take it, you leave it, it's not, you know, it's not even...
Good information.
Yeah, it's good information for you to have, it's not even us saying we recommend you do this, it's just more information for you. So we're gonna be working at putting that together, and I, I call it like the marijuana committee, we're putting on...
Advisory, yep.
Together, and then you guys get to read it, not that you don't have enough information to read it already, but you get to see it and read it, and we, we've gotten it from the right departments, so it's not, it's not what we're, it's not what we think you need, it is, you know...
The department heads.
From the department heads, so that's where we are, thank you.
Thanks. Any more department heads? We are good, okay, I guess we're gonna move down to old business, sale of foreclosed property update.
So this is just, we had a, someone under public comment, I think it was Ms. Joyce, but brought up the possibility that there was a stipulation in the law that would require anything over and above what was owed on taxes be refunded to the property owner, so we pulled the statute, so this is from Maine Municipal, so refund of surplus sale proceeds now permissible. So prior to May 2015, municipalities had neither the duty nor the authority to refund any excess proceeds to the former owner. Recent legislation now authorizes refunds of excess proceeds, but only if the municipality has adopted a detailed local ordinance establishing such refund authorities and procedures. There's still no legal requirement that a municipality adopt this ordinance or provide any type of refund, so in Acton's case, we don't have such refunds, so it will go in the proper account according to the warrant.
Okay, so move down to B, Liaison, Mary Grant.
So, I was getting ready to send out the liaison member, memo to everybody, and realize that we've forgotten the dear Mary Grant Committee, so, I believe that Mr. Winchell was last on that. So Ed and Kim, you are equal.
Yeah, I've got four, four already, so...
Well, yeah, you're the chair, so generally, we, so...
I think Kim would be going on.
That's what happens when you're unable to make it. We will add Ms. Kimberly, she will appreciate that.
It's, it's a nice committee, it's an easy committee, so...
Yeah, she'll be fine, okay, perfect, Will.
If she doesn't want it, I will take it, so...
Okay.
Okay, I guess we'll move down to new business, appointments.
All right, so I'm gonna give you a synopsis, and there's really only a couple out there that are different, and I did double-check on the motions that actually need to be made, so we're just gonna kind of go through, actually, I'm gonna give you this, your own little list, so we can go through it together.
Motion.
Because a lot of them come due, did they give you that already?
Uh, I don't believe so.
All right, so obviously, the board of selectmen are elected, animal control is the first one, that, did check with him, he's interested in being reappointed, so that's a one-year term. Capital improvement is all set, because they're already reappointed. Cemetery Committee, the ones that look kind of grayed out are ones that we confirmed, and they're inside that stack that you have in front of you, so Cemetery Committee, Jerry Carter, Tracy, Rollin', and Lois have all agreed to be reappointed, so they are in there. Code Enforcement is all set, Conservation Force is elected, Constable, I did speak to Mr. Anderson, and he said yes please. Deputy Code Officer is all set. What you'll find in there is the, a local plumbing inspector and a deputy local plumbing inspector, state's requiring that these be separate oaths, so there are a local plumbing inspector and a deputy in there. We've made Mr. Demers match his September expiration, and Mr. Sevigny matches June of '22. Health Officer, Vicky Erickson. All right, so, Mary Grant, this is, we had a change right at the last minute, so it's not 100% updated, but we're reappointing Linda Leck, Virginia DeBoer, Richard Neal, Dan Kramseth, Tammy Kramseth, and Barbara Sakar. Have not heard from Janelle yet, but Will, I sent an email, so we can always add her at the next meeting. Planning Board, the only appointment that we had, Mr. Broder had the alternate appointment, remember, until June of '21, so we are, we are putting, moving him up to a regular seat, and Mr. Long was not interested in being reappointed, as he stated, so Mr. Broder's in there until June of '24. I did the three years, based on not finding anything in the town meeting book, so we still have the two alternate spots open. Rec Committee, we have heard from the highlighted, Tina Burns, Lori Clark, and Jamie Pakwin, Carol Ward, I didn't, did I, did we hear from Carol Ward? I'm surprised, I didn't hear from her, but again, we can, we can always add them next week. Oh, and Steve Perella just replied, so maybe we can add him into our motion for the Cemetery Committee. So Road Commissioner, Road Committee is appointed. Town Clerk, Tax Collector, and Treasurer, by warrant article, that was increased to a three-year appointment, so you will see those in there for three years rather than the one. Finance, Warren Finance, and Zoning Board of Appeals, we started to talk about a little bit, Dennis is all, Denny is all set, Rollin's all set, Lois, I added Nancy Ruma, I spoke to her the other day, I thought she had mentioned that she was interested in Planning Board, but in the, during the conversation, she said it was actually Zoning Board, so once Dan indicated, and Ryan indicated, they couldn't be on it, I thought that'd be a good place for her, so if you agree, she's in there. Brandy will wait to hear from, and then we'll still have one opening there. Thoughts?
So you'll have one, if, if Brandy doesn't accept it, you'll, we'll have one, or do we need another one after that?
Right, one, yeah. So the Town Clerk, Tax Collector, Treasurer are separate, so those need to be done. The Deputy Local Plumbing Inspector is only until September, the rest can be done together as long as you read the name in the committee.
Okay, so...
You want to do those, or you want me to?
You can if you want.
And then, and then, so you said Tax Collector and Treasurer?
Yep.
Were separate?
Yeah, because those are their three-year terms.
The rest of them were?
One-year terms, actually, except for the Planning Board, he's a three-year term. Maybe do them by committee, they should be in order by committee.
Kind of sorta. That's a separate one, that's a separate one. Okay. I guess we're gonna start with these separate ones first, and we can do the Treasurer and the, right now, they just gotta be done separately. Okay, we have certificate of appointment title 38, 30A MRSA 2602, Selectman's Office, Municipality of Acton, to Michelle Rumney. The Selectmen of the Municipality of Acton do in accordance with the provisions and laws of the state of Maine, hereby appoint you as Treasurer within and for the Municipality of Acton until 6/30/2024, given under our hand this 30th day of June 2021. I will make a motion that we appoint Michelle Rumney Treasurer.
I will second that. All in favor?
Certificate of Appointment, title 30A MRSA 2602, Selectman's Office, Municipality of Acton, Maine, to Jennifer Rue. The Selectmen of the Municipality of Acton do in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the state of Maine, hereby appoint you as Town Clerk, Tax Collector, within and for the Municipality of Acton until 6/30/2024, given under our hand this 30th day of June 2021. I will make a motion that we appoint Jennifer Rue, Town Clerk, Tax Collector.
I'll second my motion. All in favor?
Certificate of Appointment, title 30A MRSA 2602, Selectman's Office, Municipality of Acton, Maine, to Vicky Erickson, the Selectman of the Municipality, Municipality of Acton, do in accordance with the provisions and laws of the state of Maine, hereby appoint you as Health Officer, within and for the Municipality of Acton, until 6/30/2022, given under our hand this 30th day of June 2021. I'll make a motion that we appoint Victoria Erickson as Health Officer.
I'll second that. All in favor? All in favor?
Certificate of Appointment, Title 30A MRSA 2602, Selectman's Office, Municipality of Acton, Maine, to James Driscoll. The Selectmen of the Municipality of Acton do, in accordance with the provisions and the laws of the state of Maine, hereby appoint you as Animal Control Officer within and for the Municipality of Acton until 6/30/2022, given under our hand this 30th day of June 2021. I make a motion we appoint Jim Driscoll as the Animal Control Officer.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Certificate of Appointment, Title 30A MRSA 2602, Selectman's Office, Municipality of Acton, to Robert Anderson. The Selectmen for the Municipality of Acton do, in accordance with the laws, accordance with the provisions and the laws of the state of Maine, hereby appoint you as Constable within and for the Municipality of Acton until 6/30/2022, given under our hand this 30th day of June 2021. I'll make a motion that we appoint Robert Anderson as Constable.
I'll second that. All in favor?
And Jason Sevigny, that was just a separate one. Certificate of Appointment, Title 30A MRSA 2602, Selectman's Office, Municipality of Acton, Maine, to Jason Sevigny. The Selectmen of the Municipality of Acton do, in accordance with the provisions and the laws of the state of Maine, hereby appoint you as Local Plumbing Inspector within and for the Municipality of Acton until 6/30/2022, given under our hand this 30th day of June 2021. I'll make a motion we appoint Jason Sevigny, Local Plumbing Inspector.
I'll second it. All approved, uh, all in favor?
Certificate of Appointment, Title 30A MRSA 2602, Selectman's Office, Municipality of Acton, Maine, to Michael Demers. The Selectmen of the Municipality of Acton do, in accordance with the provisions and the laws of the state of Maine, hereby appoint you as Deputy Local Plumbing Inspector within and for the Municipality of Acton until 9/30/2021, given under our hand this 30th day of June 2021. I'll make a motion we appoint Michael Demers as the Deputy Local Plumbing Inspector.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Now, we have some group ones. Okay, we have Mary Grant Committee members, and all these are confirmed to want to be back on it, okay? Certificate of Appointment, Title 30A MRSA 2602, Selectman's Office, Municipality of Acton, Maine, to, and I'm gonna go, I'm gonna read the rest of it first. The Selectmen of the Municipality of Acton do, in accordance with the provisions and the laws of the state of Maine, hereby appoint you as Mary Grant Committee Member. These are all the same dates. Jennifer?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Within and for the Municipality of Acton until 6/30/2022, given under our hand this 30th day of June 2021. And we have, and I will make a motion as I go down through these, I think, we have Virginia DeBoer, Daniel Crampits, Tammy Crampits, Linda Leck, Barbara Sakar, and Richard Neal.
I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Cheryl just pointed out we have a fan.
Yeah. Probably wouldn't hurt to open a door unless mosquitoes and stuff come in. Okay, and we, now we have the Zoning Board of Appeals members. And the dates on these are all the same?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Certificate of Appointment, Title 30A MRSA 2602, Selectman's Office, Municipality of Acton, Maine. It's two, and there's four of them here, but I'll do it the same way as I did the others. The Selectmen of the Municipality of Acton do, in accordance with the provisions and the laws of the state of Maine, hereby appoint you as Zoning Board of Appeals Member within and for the Municipality of Acton until 6/30/2022, given under our hand this 30th day of June 2021. And I will make a motion that we appoint Roland Waterhouse, Roland Waterhouse, Dennis Long III, Lois Mischud, and Nancy Ruma.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Okay, and next is Recreation Committee members. I'll just confirm with Jennifer, these are still all the same dates, correct? Yes, they are. Certificate of Appointment, Title 30A MRSA 2602, Selectman's Office, Municipality of Acton, Maine. The Selectmen of the Municipality, miss it?
Municipality.
That would be it. The Selectmen of the Municipality of Acton do, in accordance with the provisions and the laws of the state of Maine, hereby appoint you as Recreation Committee Member within and for the Municipality of Acton until 6/30/2022, given under our hand this 30th day of June 2021. And I will make a motion that we appoint Jamie Pakwin?
Pakwin?
Yep. Lori Clark, and Tina Burns, to the Rec Committee, to be Rec Committee members.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Okay, this is all gonna be for the Cemetery Committee members.
And if you would be so kind to add in Steve Perrello, I'll make an appointment before you leave.
He just texted you, right?
He sent me an email.
Okay, we have Certificate of Appointment, Title 30A MRSA 2602, Selectman's Office, Municipality of Acton, Maine. The Selectmen of the Municipality of Acton do, in accordance with the provisions and the laws of the state of Maine, hereby appoint you as Cemetery Committee Member within and for the Municipality of Acton until 6/30/2022, given under our hand this 30th day of June 2021. And I will make a motion that we appoint Roland Waterhouse, Gerald Cotter, Tracy LaVassar, Lois Mischud, and Steve Perrello.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Yeah, I'd like to thank everyone that agreed to be on these committees. It's hard to find people, and we have a lot of good people that have stepped up and wants to be on and wants to be reappointed, so, thank you.
Please make sure you come take your oath before your next meeting.
Thanks for reading all those.
Sure.
Okay, where are we now? Okay, down to B, under new business, Commercial Hall or Application.
So we have Mr. Travis Penny, who's been a Commercial Hall or in Acton now for many years, got his application and renewal in. Thank you, Travis. I didn't even have to call him this year. He's got his insurance, his list of people that he picks up for, the fee is attached, everything seems to be complete, so the transfer station doesn't have any concerns with him. We'll motion to approve it, and we'll process it accordingly.
Okay. Okay. Motion? I'll make a motion that we accept the application of the Commercial Hall's permit for Travis Penny.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Okay. Okay, we're gonna go down to C, Mass Gathering Permit.
So to your left, you'll find a Mass Gathering Permit for Circus. Coming back to town, I had to check with the Fire Chief and the Sheriff's Department, make sure they didn't have any concerns from the last time, and all seems to be well.
Yep.
Paid the fee, insurance, all the requirements are attached.
I'll make a motion that we sign the Mass Gathering Permit for Zerbeeny Family Circus.
I'll second that.
Looking to see about the dates that are on it, that's all. Maybe it's not pertinent, but we don't have, oh, date of the event, August 15, 2021.
I'll second the motion. All in favor? Okay, what are we down to now? Okay, we're down to D, Canal Road Contract with Conduction with Wakefield.
Okay, so in front of you, you have some documents. I know that one of the Selectmen is here from the town of Wakefield. So this contract came in on June 22, and I called the Selectmen individually to ask you if you wanted the town's attorney to review it, okay? Two of the three of you verbally told me over the phone that it was the, you know, that you normally did that, so it doesn't hurt to have them look at it. So the contract, so Brad Moore from Burke and Clay looked at it, he made a couple of minor changes. One seems to be drawing more attention to the other, but in Mr. Bean's contract, it says, "It must be addressed that I will not accept liability of a deteriorating structure." Your attorney added, "Unless damage is caused by negligence of the contractor." And I know there's gonna be a lot of discussion about that. I think it's just a simple way of trying to reword it, so he doesn't have a liability to the deteriorating, but we find a way to make sure he's liable to the new structure. So that's the first piece. Now I'll catch you up on my conversation with Mr. Bean, who's also sent me an updated email. The next thing at the end, so Mr. Bean says, "We strongly believe our new structure will have no impact on the existing canal and arch, and we know the bridge is red-listed and deteriorating." Your attorney has added the line, "Contractor warrants that contractor work shall be free of defects and completed in a workman-like manner." Seems minor. No changes on page two. On page three, Mr. Bean's statement says, "Each municipality is responsible for payment," and he's simply added, "In the amount set forth below." Mr. Bean sent me an updated one, and he does not have that on there. Your attorney also added a couple of statements that say, "All work to be completed in a workman-like manner in accordance with the plans and specification." He has, Mr. Bean has sent an updated that says, "Submit to the towns of Wakefield, New Hampshire, and town of Acton Maine stamped engineer drawings." I asked him in an email about those engineer drawings, if we could have them or see them, because I didn't think there were any, but I could certainly be wrong. He hasn't addressed that piece yet. I also asked him an email about some sort of warranty, because your attorney wants some sort of warranty in the contract. And he says that, as previously stated, these bridges are state-of-the-art, longevity of this type of bridge outweighs DOT bridges in New Hampshire. The entire bridge is 5,000 PSI concrete. He says it should last over 100 years, so I've replied and said, "Can we put something in the legal contract indicating that?" The other change that your attorney would like to see is at the very bottom, Mr. Bean has total base price, I'm sorry, total base bid. The attorney would like it to say total price, and then with some sort of, you know, if, it being the total price, $217,000, and then a statement that if you need to make some sort of amendment, addendum, if there's a change, then, you know, we could put that clause in there. But those are the changes that Mr. Moore recommended. I sent you another email that Mr. Bean sent. Tried to call you, was tied up, so review some of the changes. I did have a phone conversation with him, but he really disagrees with the negligence of contractor. He says it's out of contact. What's gonna determine negligence? Do you think we should do the shore, embrace the rocks? We have done this, and we have done that. It's after the fact. What we know is that your structure is deteriorating. Caution not to disturb the structure. We know money is tight for both towns, but bracing and shoring will cost at least $100,000 So that was the piece that he really disagrees with, and I think we can understand that based on the prior structure. So even if you can get past that, it's additionally, total base is commonly used in contracts, not according to your attorney. It should be price. Something may arise, which we talked about, the addendum. As far as the payment, oh, that was the other thing, I'm sorry, I missed one. The last statement, Mr. Bean said, "Payment due immediately upon completion." Your attorney has changed it to say, "Payment due immediately upon completion and final inspection and approval from the town." So do with it as you will. Those are your attorney's recommendations that you asked me to get.
You got any of that?
I gave you the, both of them.
Yeah.
The, let's see, where do I find it here? I understand it's concerned on the existing bridge.
Yep.
I mean, you're gonna be crazy to walk into that and, you know, have any liability.
Yep, on the deteriorating of the prior one.
Especially knowing that if you had to have that reconstruction, it would cost probably four times as much as what we're gonna pay to have the bridge put on in the first place.
Yeah, I mean, there's a reason why we're going over the top of it and not touching it.
Yeah.
So, and that's where, when I told Brad of your thoughts, and you talked about taking that out, but putting some other statement in that gives you a warranty on the new bridge, and forget about the old.
Yeah, yeah, definitely, and I, when we read it, I read it, I didn't think he was talking about the new one anyways, and if...
In the first paragraph, he's not. I'm saying, Brad's saying, add something.
Add in a warranty.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't expect to have a warranty of 100 years either, but...
No, no. I mean, there should be some kind of a workmanship, whether it's three, five, you know, nothing.
I would think, you know, three to five years. That way, there, we're gonna know if there's an issue right off the bat, I would think, but...
I mean, I don't think we're gonna have any issues, but not with the resume that he gave us, but you gotta protect the town, too.
Yeah.
Should we ask up the gentleman from Wakefield and...
Yeah, in a minute. And the other thing is the, the total base price, when it put total price, I understand where he's coming from, because there's really nothing here stating cases any change orders. So if we can have him write in something, you know, any, any change orders above and beyond the contract to...
Require town approval?
Requires Selectman approval from Acton and Wakefield Select Board.
Well, they can, I mean, in all fairness, Wakefield, if Wakefield doesn't wanna do a change order, that's on them.
Yeah, that's on them. On our side, it's just Acton.
So change order, anything above, anything above the 108.5, we're looking for a change order signed by the board in advance?
Yes. I think that's really, we really ought to, because honestly, if there's anything above and beyond that we see that needs to be done, which always happens, we like to, you know, we don't expect him to go, if we say, "Hey, we want you to wind note this section here, this approach," or whatever, we just, we wanna make sure that he's covered, so...
And that would protect both.
Yeah.
And what were your thoughts on the stamped drawing? Because he added that back in to the second one. Are there...
Who added that in? Was that Brad, or was that?
No, that was Mr. Bean.
Yeah, so I mean, if he's gonna give us, that would be awesome, if he could give us a stamped, stamped engineered plans.
Okay, yeah, I must've missed that.
Because I think he, when we, when he was down here, he said if we wanted those, he'd do them, if I'm not mistaken, so...
All right, so we scratched out the first one, the statement, the last line on the front page, that's, is that okay, that Brad put in there, just that the contractor warrants the work as free of defects? I mean, that seems minor, doesn't it? I mean, do you think any contractor would have a concern with that in there?
I wouldn't think they would, but I thought he actually had something already in here about that.
And then the insurance, obviously, and the final inspection and approval from the town, he, I think he just reworded a little bit, said, no way. As far as payment, I asked for nothing upfront, I paid the... And I apologize, I did, when you guys told me to get a legal opinion, I got the opinion, and I knew that it had to be on tonight's agenda, I did send it to Wakefield and Mr. Bean before sending it to you guys, so when you got CC, another replies, oops. I was trying to get ahead of it.
All right, I'm Charlie, with the Town Selectmen, Vice Chair. I've, as you know, I've been dealing with this for over a year, and I'm pretty aware of everything that's going on in this. I opened up the Pandora's Box, and this is where we're at, okay? So, what I'd like to say is, speaking on the behalf of Mr. Bean and the socialists, the word negligence can be understood.
Definitely.
That's the whole thing, and you said it perfectly, and I'm completely in agreement with you, as us as a town. I'm not here to tell you how to run your town whatsoever. All I'm here to do is give you what we think of, just some good thought. Mr. Bean, as we all know, this bridge is red-listed, and what red-listed means that it's unsafe, basically, it needs to be fixed. It's deteriorating now, it has deteriorated worse. It has deteriorated worse from the time we started. As of now, you can see it, rocks are falling, you know? That's his concern. I think most of the things that Assembly has said is perfectly fine.
Yeah, and the board agreed to take that first one out, so we'll get rid of that.
It's the negligence. And the reason why the negligence is, is his insurance company is not gonna insure him on something that's already falling down.
Yeah, and everybody knows that, you know?
And, and that's all, and I believe, and this is how I read it, all he wants to do is address that so that you understand that he can't accept it, and you said it perfectly. So I'm, I'm not here to disagree or anything like that. But it's hard to give a warranty on something, well, not say a warranty, but on something that's falling down.
Well, we don't want the warranty on that. We're just talking about the new.
I, I really haven't said, there's nothing that says that this man can't tell us that his bridge is gonna stand up.
I, I think that really the biggest problem we have here is because it's on the historical thing and every, you know, there's opposition there, and, and really what we, we've gotta do is, and what Mr. Bean should be doing, like anybody would do in that situation, I think, would be take pictures showing the deterioration, making sure that they know that, you know? Because the way I look at it is, um, how do I put it? If the bridge is deteriorating the way it's deteriorating, you know? And they say it's gonna fall, it could fall in.
It can, and that's the issue, is that no matter what this man does, the negligence wording will put him at fault. Because he could just be forty feet away and rumble the ground and the rocks move up. I get that.
And, and in all fairness, I don't, Brad Moore might not have realized that we, until we had a further conversation, when I sent him the contract review, that the entire bridge was being set on the other one. So he's gonna be fine with that. So we're gonna take that out, we're gonna get some, Mr. Bean to tie us down to some number for a warranty that we can put in there, make those other minor changes and bring it back.
I would think you'd want one, too, on Wakefield's side.
Do you guys require a warranty?
No.
No?
We're, we're pretty, we're pretty, we're pretty up to par with this. We feel very confident. We want this done more than we think. And I can tell you right now, as one that's, if, if, I can't imagine if something happens, my, my heart would be at the ground.
Can the road be closed? I don't know the area, but can you close it since the travel, until we get out there? Can you close it so they can't travel over it, if it's deteriorating that much?
Well.
I mean, the bridge.
I mean, it just seems like the logical thing to do, no?
The, uh, the bridge engineers have been, they've looked at it and all that. You know, that's why we have the posts and signs. I mean, we don't believe right now, you know, as long as the trucks stay off and everything else, but.
I think it's okay.
But I'll give you some, some good news. It says to me that I believe the first week of July, which in a week or so, you should be receiving some plans, some engineer plans. That's not a problem. And then probably within two weeks beyond that, the work will commence. He will, he will start. So I'm figuring maybe by the first of August, we either will have a bridge or he'll be at least started. The other thing is that, I guess that's about it, basically. That, uh, I want you to know that we as Wakefield are on board one-hundred percent. There's nothing here that we can see that this is not good. But I cannot promise you, I don't understand here, promise you for him or anybody else, that something may not, could not happen.
And we, I, I think we all completely agree with that.
Yeah, we agree on that one, it's just, I mean.
We did, when this all started, I started for the thirty-four-foot bridge. A thirty-four-foot bridge, how did I come up with that? Well, because somewhere along the line, the Heritage Commission had done some study to tell us the influence line was around eighteen feet. So that's eighteen feet from the center of the bridge. So it gave us plenty of room to do it. I've moved this bridge up to forty feet to give us a few extra buffer. Just for the point, Mr. Bean is only gonna dig three or four feet to put these pillars in. He should not, and hopefully not, will, will deter anything to, to make things. But again, we cannot, we cannot predict that. I mean, we can have an earthquake, small tremble that you don't even know about, and that could not. But the point is, I agree, Mr. Bean, I believe, has taken a lot of pictures, and I don't blame him one bit. He's done all his little research, he's done an influence line. This is why we gone to twenty, uh, to twenty feet from the center of each side. I just want you to know that we as a town are a team player. We are here with you to do this. We're gonna, we're gonna soak up whatever happens with you, not against you. We're all part of the same team.
Yeah, and we appreciate that. I think really what we were trying to do is just make sure that we all had all our i's dotted, our t's crossed, and, um.
We just scared it.
Well, and we do it with all contracts. I tried to tell him that, I mean, all the contracts, because the selectmen, God love them, are not lawyers, you know what I mean? And their, their job is to protect the town, so it doesn't hurt to have an attorney review a contract like that.
Really, at the end of the day, by adding in liquid, we're gonna, we're gonna add in the bottom of the contract about the change orders, that's only a benefit to him.
Yeah, really.
Because, you know, when you have a contract price, you know, we could argue the fact, oh, that was, should've been included or whatever. So by, by doing what we're doing, it may help him at the end.
So the big thing, what he's asking for is that he's, he's not asking us for any money upfront. He doesn't need it. He, he really doesn't need it. He'll have this all done. The bridge is ordered. So it's in process of being built today. Okay? We should have this before the end of the month. All he's asking is that if you have to make any decisions to mount yourselves, that we could do this in a very prompt, fast pace at the end of this. 'Cause he, he would like to be paid at the end, only to move on to the.
And that's, and that says it in the contract, that he'll get paid on the.
And all, I think we really, you know, when this process goes down, you know, and towards the end of it, you know, we'll have a meeting with, I think we ought to have a meeting with their board, their meeting run on site with our road commissioners, their highway department.
Get it all.
Get it done with, right there.
Yeah, approve everything and then cut the check.
At least on his part.
So really, all we, the main thing we're looking to have is some sort of a warranty on the bridge that he's putting in.
Yep.
You know, something.
That's acceptable.
Yeah, and, uh, um, the statement at the end about the change order.
And are, are we leaving Brad's other things with the requirement with the insurance, which, I mean, I think he's fine with some of the minor things.
Well, no, I mean, we have to require insurance.
We're gonna require, yeah, he's got the insurance.
Well, I know he has it, but I mean, it's gotta be written in there. That's just, I'll make the minor changes, take the negligence piece out, talk to Brad, I'll prep it for next meeting.
We wouldn't be able to allow him to work.
Yeah, I mean, we don't even allow, we don't even allow, as you saw, our contractors to dump at the transfer station unless we have a, you know.
No, I don't, I wouldn't allow.
And I'm sure he'll give us certificates of insurance. Yeah, he'll give us certificates of insurance, I'm sure, anyway.
Before he starts.
Um, yeah. So really, on those couple of things, can you, as a board, have you, you folks signed this yet?
We, we, we are going to.
Okay.
We haven't had a meeting to sign it.
Okay.
'Cause I'm just getting this back today.
Yeah, okay.
And there are different contracts. One's based towards Acton, and one's.
Yeah, okay.
Charlie.
I'll make the.
I have two contracts, because that's what.
Yeah, I'll make the changes tonight and send it over.
Yeah, yeah. Would you be opposed to putting the few changes that we have into yours to give it more, more continuity?
If, if she can send us that copy, so that we have that, that I, I'll run it by them. I don't see anything wrong.
When's your meeting? When's your meeting?
We have one next Wednesday.
Okay.
But we can, we can sign, we can do these.
I mean, it's, it really does, it would, it would be nice if we were.
It'd be nice, yeah, it'd be just nice if the word.
You can sign a, a contract outside of a meeting?
We can, we can do, we can have a, we can have a meeting.
Oh, you have a standing in, okay. I'll make the changes first thing tomorrow, and I will send it around.
So if we could do that, that way both contracts mirror each other for, for the most part.
And I don't care, I, I don't see anything wrong with it.
And I, I can't imagine if he's gonna sign our contract, why would it be any different?
Right, right.
So, and my, I guess my question is, too, is, so you, he has a timeframe. He, he wants to get in there and do this, right?
He's saying it's gonna take ten to twelve, uh, twelve to fifteen days at the most.
Well, the reason why I ask is if he has a timeline that we can kind of nail down, our road commissioner. Well, we have to post, and you guys are gonna have to do the same thing. We gotta have something ahead of time so they know that. We do have a state law that we have to do that.
As soon as we sign the contract, it'll be a few days out, so we can start advertising it then.
But he's gonna have to have a sign made and stuff, so.
I think he should have plenty of time, enough time, so he can at least tell the residents, 'cause that's a nine-mile detour. To start there, I mean, like I said, he'll be, he'll be quick. I've dealt with this before, and I think you're gonna be very impressed, and also I hope that he can help you and your other projects.
So can you have your, your highway director, public works director, or whatever you wanna call him, contact our, our district two road commissioner, kind of line up? When, if, if you can get a date, 'cause he, he, he's gonna have to have some signs made up, you know, so we can post it ahead of time.
Yep, I will.
And we can also, Adam, we can do in a butters list where our map's online, we could send out, you know, a half-a-page paragraph letter to all the butters within somebody feet, just to, if you want.
I believe Adam was talking to Brad.
Yeah, talking to Brad.
We just wanna make sure that, you know, that there might be people who don't live right there that use as a commuter through, that they know, you know, that that's coming.
They're gonna have to do the same. That's, that is, that's not, nothing that we shouldn't ask for.
All right, I'm gonna change and send it over.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
This is project as well.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Okay, where are we? Okay, new business, transfer station, Ollie Rate.
Uh, so the last employee that was hired at the transfer station, it was discussed and recommended by the superintendent. I'll wait, I echo.
We all set?
It was recommended by the superintendent that after thirty days, he give the individual a dollar raise, which you guys discussed. So he was looking for a motion to increase the new employee from fourteen to fifteen dollars an hour. It would be effective Monday, July fifth.
I'll make a motion. We do the increase to fifteen per hour?
All second that. All in favor? Okay.
You wanna do public comment first before we do executive session?
Yeah, I think it's probably a good idea. We're gonna do public comment. Anybody got a public comment?
Joyce Batch, I have something totally different. I was looking at the town map, the interactive map, having to do with a small subdivision that's going up in Shapley. It's something caught my eye, and I would just like you guys to look at it. And because I thought I knew where the, the town line was between Acton and Shapley, and I don't know anymore. Can I show you this?
I guess, oh, yeah, go ahead. Is it what this has, I mean, West Shore Drive?
Yenaguspon Road?
Sorry?
Is it Yenaguspon Road? I mean, um, the West Shore Drive?
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
That would be the three-oh subdivision they're putting in there.
Right, this is an old map that shows the same thing. This is, this mark is my house. So this is where it comes around. Now, we all see this big dotted line.
The cul-de-sac is right there at the end, correct?
Yep, turn around and everything. We all see this big line. But if you look real carefully, you see this dotted line, and it says, Town Line Acton, Town Line Shapley. There are about three or four houses there, that if that is the right line, are in Acton.
So what's this line?
Ah, that's up to you.
May I look at it, Joyce, the map?
Yep. And, um, it's easy to see it if you print one out.
Yeah.
Rather than look on your screen. This is.
The town line, yep.
Yep. So there are three or four pretty good value houses there.
Is, are those the houses they just accepted?
It's probably the maps, but we'll call, we can call O'Donnell's and Associates in the morning.
Thanks.
It's a good point, yep.
Which, which is which?
I think it may be this line that has to be moved over. We'll call, we'll call O'Donnell's, and I'll CC you in their response.
If you, if you look at it, too, one of the islands, which everybody, Shapley Island, it's like, no, it's an Acton island.
Have you looked at it from the Shapley maps? Go to the Shapley site and do the reverse?
When I, when I did, I looked at from some neighbors.
Yep.
On that site, saying Acton, Shapley.
It shows the same, okay. Take a look at it, won't you, Carla, call?
I thought it was a little interesting.
Very interesting.
Hi, Bernard Broder. Just a couple of things. I, I've seen this done in other town meeting forums, or council meetings, or select board. I think it would be helpful if, before the select board voted on any issue, if there was an opportunity for public input just on that issue, not general, but just, I mean, because we may have some, have information that might be helpful in forming your vote, and there's really no opportunity to say anything until it's already said and done. So just a thought. The other thing that I want to mention relates to the, the most recent town meeting, which I was very pleased to be there, attendance, participation, all of that. But one of the issues that came up in that meeting was the vote-taking process, and I'm hoping the select board will address that. But I, I think that really.
Are you talking about one that we did to recount?
Correct. A recount is one thing, in my view. A revote is another. And it's pretty clear that that's what happened, because the total votes cast changed, the disparity between yays and nays changed, so I.
The, the, the same decision, though. It's, it still had the same outcome, and I think, I think Mr. Nass, when he asked for that, he, it was pretty much the same thing. You ask for a recount or a revote, it's the same thing. You expect the same people to stand up, do, like they did before. So I guess it's just how you interpret it.
But it didn't.
It did, yeah. So Mr. Nass, I guess, a couple of things. Mr. Nass is an elected moderator, so as much as I appreciate the board of selectmen, they don't have any authority over him. So he, you know, I mean, we gotta address our concerns with the moderator. They don't have the authority, if the town of Acton votes him as a moderator, I mean, they can give suggestions to him, but we went back and, and watched it as well, and the, I agree with you one-hundred percent, it's very hard. And if the moderator thinks it's too close to count, you know, and he chooses to do that, then, you know, we're at his mercy unless the voters say differently. But it did, and I think the article failed, don't quote me on it, but if it failed the first time, it failed the second time. Whatever the count was, was the same, and the count numbers weren't the same.
The count numbers were not the same.
But the outcome was the same.
Yes, but that may not be true in the future.
True.
And my opinion is, that is not right. Someone who did not vote the first time should not be voting the second. Someone who voted one way the first time should not be able to change their vote on a, on a revote.
And Mr. Broder, I think one issue that we did have, and I don't know if, and I noticed it, that we had a group of people on the left-hand side, and they were sitting down, standing up, and we ended up having to make them come over and sit down.
Correct.
And I think we may have missed some votes over there. That might've been part of the problem, too. So, I mean, obviously, it's something we can address next year.
It's definitely a good lesson learned, and Mr. Nass always comes after, up after town meeting, and we go over all of the current concerns I had, because when he went on to articles while we were trying to count all those close races with Warren and Finance, I mean, that's a clerk's nightmare to me. Because, you know what I mean? Because I was trying to take minutes on amendments on those articles, the zoning articles, and they were trying to have discussion, and I'm trying to have a count, and I have somebody in the front row saying, I can't hear the names the clerk is saying, you know? So we talk about all those little things, and that did came up, that did come up, and it's a, a point well-taken, and he understands that, and we'll address it a different way if it happens again. if it happens again. It's well taken.
Or try not to let it happen again.
Well, right. I mean, he'll, well, what he'll have to do is just take the count. You take the count and move on. Or you can, like you, you mentioned to me, we talked about some other methods that we could use. Voting by secret ballot is also an option that a voter can do. You know, there are other ways that we could fix it.
Yeah, I mean, that was another issue as, as a voter. I think that especially depending on a controversial nature of particular vote, people may not want to stand up and be visible as to how they're voting.
But they can make, they can make the motion to, you know, to have, go to a secret ballot if they feel that's, or somebody can do that.
Those might be good things to remind the voters of at the beginning, because they may not know they can make that motion. But, but you're 100% right.